Okay, welcome to the June 7th, 2017 Selectment Meeting. Board of Selectmen and Sewer Commissioners meeting. First item on the agenda is roll call. All members are present. Next item is public comment. Do we have any comment? Do you want to go? I'll let you go first.
Okay. I actually have public comment from Dennis Minnick, Police Chief. He had asked that we read to the record a memo that explains the training that took place several weeks ago that had caused people some concern about the noise. So if it pleases the board, I'll read this to the record.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Stated May 11th, and it says, "Dear Anita, I'm writing this memo to explain the training that the West Boylston Police Department participated in on May 8th and 9th of this year. The training was called the National Improvised Explosive Familiarization and Chemical Industry Outreach Workshop. The training is a two-day event designed to give FBI Special Agent Bomb Technician, federal, state, and local bomb technicians, and Military Explosive Ordinance Disposal Technicians advanced hands-on understanding of the hazards posed by improvised explosives. This training is also coupled with an event tailored primarily to the chemical industry and academia personnel, and subsequently aimed at a broader audience to include the Joint Terrorism Task Force officers, the FBI, state and local police management, and first responders. To be very clear, this training was sponsored by the West Boylston Police Department with FBI Special Bomb Technician Jeffrey Raby conducting the training. The events planning began in 2015 when the FBI sponsored a member of the West Boylston Police Department to attend a specialized training held in Quantico, Virginia. Once he completed this training, this officer and FBI agent surveyed local areas for the location where the training program could take place. The specific site for the classroom training was the Wachusett Country Club in West Boylston. The site designated for hands-on training was located on private property in West Boylston. This hands-on site was chosen after many factors were planned, such as setback distances, laws pertaining to legal distances from homes, and most importantly, the safety of all participants and the general public. This pre-planning for this event took place over a period of one year. The training site was approved by the FBI technicians as well as others. With safety as the main concern, paramedics along with emergency ambulance were at the training site the entire time. In addition to the above-stated primary goals of the training, additional topics were explored and tested, such as communication capabilities, testing of the new regional communication center in Holden, as well as other initiatives. In reference to public announcements and notifications, the original flyers were distributed to many law enforcement and local businesses. The hands-on location was not made known to most participants for obvious reasons. West Boylston Police Officers did go physically from house to house to notify direct abutters of the event, and all those persons were invited to attend the training, many of which were in attendance. Other than the fact that this was a live explosive training and not be prudent to notify a large distribution of residents of the locations that the training was being held, notifications were held to test emergency communication capabilities in real time. I realize that the noise and percussion of the explosions did cause consternation and upset some residents. This I apologize for, but also stand by my reasons that it was necessary. The total pre-planning, review, supervision of this training, and command systems that were utilized were the most expansive that I've ever participated in over my 30 years of law enforcement. To list but a few of the participants in the training, I will list them in no particular order with the design to specifically not include certain agencies. Participants were the West Boylston Police Department, West Boylston Fire Department, FBI, Massachusetts State Police, New Hampshire State Police, Boston Police, Worcester Police, and SWAT team, and many agencies belonging to SMLAC. There were local police departments and many businesses, the NSA, the United States Military, and civilian citizens. The trainings, this kind of training is held at various locations throughout the United States. It was an honor to not only sponsor but attend this training. It is very evident that improvised explosives are being used by evil people on a daily basis. This training was a proactive way to reach out to the public safety personnel as well as others to emphasize the dangerous and identification of these devices. I'm very proud that the training was very effective and met all the goals that were set to be achieved. I want to thank again all of the trainers, the participants, and especially the citizens of West Boylston for not only having to endure the explosives, but also for their very strong support of the program. I am very grateful for the support that I have always received, not only from the West Boylston Police Department, but also from the Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen. Respectfully submitted, Chief Dennis Minnick.
Anybody have any comments?
I do, why this was not done in a remote area? Why it has to be Lee Street? And the other question is, I know that, you know, it was not notified for some residents, but not the surrounding lot of residents. You know, Lee Street is so close to a lot of residential area, so that's the huge concern. So, you know, they did, it's a good training, you know, we need to have it. But why in West Boylston? And if it is in West Boylston, you know, the town residents should have the right to know it. So what will go wrong? That's what the town residents question.
Well, obviously, I can't speak to those facts, Raj, but we can ask the chief to come into the meeting to discuss it in the future.
Yeah. I would say, you know, maybe next time, if that something happened like that, it's better to notify. If they can notify to PAX 25, why not to our town? All of the sudden, you know, it was a loud explosives. The noise was very loud, and the residents can, you know, they can make an arrangement, like their pets, children. That's my only concern. It's not my concern, you know, there are a lot of residents complained on that.
Understood.
I mean, that's just, I think it was good that he sent the letter out and told people, but maybe, like you say, in the future, if we could just ask the chief. It doesn't have to say, "It's here." Just gentle to the town that it's happening, so people would know. That's fine, I think, though, but thank you for the chief giving us that. Next, public comment. Could step up, please? Identify yourself.
Hi, my name's John Schlichty. I live at 58 Central Street, and I was the PEG Coordinator for West Boylston Public Access TV from June, excuse me, from August 2015 to June 2016. I continued with my membership in the PEG Board up until December, and at that time, because of family commitments that would make it difficult for me to conform to scheduling and so forth, I withdrew from the PEG Board. However, I've maintained my interest, and I've gone to every PEG Board meeting that has been held up to the current time. I was thinking that I would perhaps speak to the Board of Selectmen later at their next Board of Selectmen meeting, but not sure of my schedule, I figured today was a good time to make a few comments, knowing that this is the time of year when changes are being made as we are going into an upcoming fiscal year. I did meet with the Town Administrator Anita Shipers to ask some questions about how she saw the West Boylston Public Access TV going forward, and, you know, expressed my hope that the role of the PEG Board and the different procedures and policies for West Boylston Public Access TV would be clarified. She indicated to me that she hoped to get a number of new people on the Board of, the PEG Board, to represent the schools, sports, and other things. I strongly support having more people on the PEG Board, particularly people that could contribute to different aspects of the town. I would like to make two suggestions, that whatever is proposed, if it's going to be a change in town policy, that that be presented to the current PEG Board, and if it's going to be a change in town policy, that possibly a public hearing be held. So that's item number one. During, number two, during 2015 and 2016, West Boylston Public Access TV made several advances, which are documented in the 2015-2016 handbook. There were increases in programs, bulletins, things were put on YouTube, and so forth. And those are all documented in this report, pages 204 and 205. The PEG Board voted to get some new Castas equipment, and that was going to give us some advances. We have, through this current year, although there have been some delays, got that new equipment, and it does provide some significant things for us. We have live streaming and the opportunity to see programs on demand. However, when this equipment was voted upon, and we were going to implement it, it was also said that there would be a strong effort to continue to get bulletins that would represent the current town activities. In the past, there were many things on there, from the senior center, from the library, from different sports associations, and so forth. Unfortunately, that has not taken place. Previously, in this year, past year, I did meet with the Board of Selectmen, and I gave you some examples of late. I've been looking at the Town Message Board, and I see current activities being posted there that are not on Channel 191. Now, Channel 191 does have rotating bulletins. However, more than 50 percent of those bulletins are things that have been ongoing for more than a year. There's very few actual new current activities on Channel 191. So it's my hope that some effort will be given to improve that. The other thing is the Castas equipment should still allow us to provide some good scheduling, so that people will know what will be on when. I believe there can be more improvements made in that area, and two communities that we looked at that had the Castas equipment were Milford and Sterling Lancaster, both of which have schedules that people can see, this is what's going to be on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and so forth. So that's one and two, and I will try to be short. I am aware that a new PEG Coordinator position has been advertised, and I expect we will have a new person decided shortly to join Tim Scanlon, the Access Coordinator. Also, some of the people that have been working with us over the past year have gone on to other pursuits. Neil Tupper, who is recording tonight's program, has told me that he'll be available until August, but that is something that we don't know if he'll be able to continue or assist us after that. Besides positions that you're already aware of, the PEG Coordinator position, there's also a PEG Equipment Coordinator position. And I would like to say that I do feel that the PEG Board deserves to have more input into what equipment is being purchased and how it's being used. At the current year, the current fiscal year, PEG Board members were not asked to vote on any of the new equipment that we were going to be getting and utilizing. And when requested for a list of purchases that have been made, as far as my knowledge, I've been at every meeting so far, I have not heard that any list of equipment expenditures to date has been provided. There have been purchases in the past, when I was PEG Coordinator, we'd bring it up to the PEG Board, we'd vote on it, we'd do a little progress update, show pictures, tell people what they were going to be used for and so forth. Also, there's been no treasures report for the PEG Board, and I really feel that the list of expenditures, which could be getting, able to be getting from invoices, because certainly things have been purchased, it should be available to the PEG Board. Another issue is that there is currently a separate webpage for WBPA.TV, and it's not a town webpage. It's a godaddy.com-affiliated webpage, and it's my hope that that webpage or a new webpage will be associated so that it belongs to the town and/or West Boylston Public Access I think that is just about it, and I don't enjoy speaking before you, even though you're a lovely group. I do tend to get a little nervous. If anybody has any questions of me, you're welcome to ask. Otherwise, I'm here to give my input in hope that it will benefit the town. I strongly believe that the PEG Equipment Coordinator position should be one, as well as the PEG Coordinator, that provides the PEG Board and the town with a summary of what's been expended and how it's been spent. I know it has to go through the accountant's office, but if there's a PEG Board that's going to serve the town to make things better, I hope that will be taken into consideration.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next item on the agenda is meeting minutes, April 19th, 2017, regular session, and it says revote.
Right, Siobhan, you were, this isn't that meeting, but you do the tip in the vote, so.
Oh, and then they stay clear, okay.
Ask the board to re-vote it.
I make a motion to revoke.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're going to change?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is May 15th, 2017, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And the next is May 17th, 2017, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, next item is board reorganization for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Sewer Commissioners. First item is chairman. Do I hear any nominations for chairman?
I make a motion to nominate John Hadley as a chairman.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to say, a year ago, we had a split vote, and I went on public record to say that I didn't think you would make a good chairman, and I just want to say I was mistaken. I think you've done a great job, and you proved me wrong.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next is vice chairman.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Ruchow's question.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and the other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Next item is clerk.
Make a motion to approve Raj as clerk.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for clerk. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will turn it over. If I could just, under public comment, I just wanted to thank, and I'm sure the board wants to thank, everybody that came out to vote the other day. Probably the worst possible day for an election that I've ever seen, in June, first of all. The senior center portion did pass, and we're going to move forward, and we would hope everybody that has any questions would come to the building meetings, they're posted. Come, we had a lot of good input from people during this whole information session, and we're going to move forward with this project. So everybody, come to the building meetings, contact the town administrator. Any thoughts, any ideas, let us know. Thank you for everybody that came out in that awful weather yesterday and voted. I appreciate it, thanks. And do you mind if I stay here?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I'm going to have to move everything, and then we'll switch.
Hold the mic. Don't worry about that. Considered, designated in Board of Selectmen assignments for 2017, 2018. This is below the 1617 listing. Earth removal board, myself, anybody else want to do it?
Make a motion, Mr. Hadley. Name on the Earth removal board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town White Planting Committee, Ms. Bonson.
So moved.
Second.
Does she want to stay out?
No.
No one asked, they asked John, but they didn't ask you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojo. Thank you, I appreciate that. It's only taken years for Mr. Hadley to remember that I'm staying here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upper Blackstone Water Pollution Abatement District, alternate, Mr. Crowley.
There's a lot of heavy lifting.
I was going to say, how many times you met on that?
Zero.
So I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
MBTA, Ms. Bonson, would you like to do that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Hadley. I would, unless somebody else wants it. I'm always willing to share.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Parks Facilities Committee, Raj and Mr. Crowley. That's what last year, does anybody want to change?
I'd like to do it again.
Fine with me. You can.
So moved Raj and Pat.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
MWRA, alternate, Mr. Crowley.
Another tough one.
I was going to say, you've met on that one yet. Would you do it again?
Too much work.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees, myself, if everybody's okay. We've been doing a lot of work on that, and I do like it.
I nominate Mr. Hadley.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
CMRPC, alternate, Raj.
I do like to be there.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bylaws Committee goes to the chairman.
I don't think, I don't think we had a meeting last year for the Bylaws Committee. At least if we did, I wasn't invited.
You did. You had one.
At the town meeting, before town meeting.
The wetlands bylaws.
I don't think I was.
I don't think there was a, after the town meeting, I don't think there was a meeting.
Yeah, so.
We will make sure that they are aware of updated appointments.
All right. Technology Development Committee, Mr. Ruchow.
I would like to stay on that if possible.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Municipal Building Committee, Raj.
It's a very busy committee, so if someone else want to meet, want to.
Have you met? Nope. What exactly that committee?
What we do.
That committee's responsible for basically approving use of the municipal building fund for any project where they need additional funding above and beyond what was appropriated by town meeting. There's a, do you remember what the balance currently is in that, Neasey?
It's less than $50,000, isn't it?
Is there $6 million in the line each time?
Is that what the 9,900?
Yeah, not each time.
So whatever's not used from the 9,900 goes into that fund?
Right. And any project can petition to that committee for funds to be released for use on overages or other unforeseen costs that might occur.
So we don't know what the balance is?
I can very easily, we can get that for you.
But we never met last year?
No, we met.
No meeting required at that board last year.
All right. Do you have more?
No, okay. So moved Raj.
Second.
All in favor?
We could just, I'm just curious, what the balance is.
Yeah, let's see that. We can get it while you got it.
And Transportation Committee, Raj.
I do like to be there.
Did you meet on that?
Second.
Yep, we do meet. We do meet.
There's a couple of them.
It's Thursday of each month.
Yeah, and it's very active, at least now.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Review and vote to approve warrants. Pat, you want to take care of this?
I make a motion to approve the warrants for the periods covering May 17th, 2017 through June 7th, 2017. Payables warrant for the town, FY17, number 47, 48, and 49. Sewer enterprise warrant, FY17, SE 26 and 27. School warrant, FY17, 18, and municipal light warrants, no, I'm sorry, FY17, number 18, and municipal light plant warrants, number 23 and 24.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 7:15, Richard Sullivan, audit presentation.
How are you? Very well, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. I guess what I'd like to do is just give you an idea of how we go about auditing the town, give you some ideas of how I believe the results were, both financially in terms of the numbers, as well as coordination of information from your financial people, which is very important to have a good, efficient audit, and then just take any questions as you may have. So this is our first year as being your auditor, and with that comes a lot of additional work related to it, both on our side and also the participation that we need from your people. Because we walk in and we don't know the town, we have to document the systems, and we normally do that through a series of interviews, which takes a few days to get through. We obviously do observations, we look at some of your policies and procedures, but a big part of it is like, how do you process your transactions, both for the payroll cycle, the expenditure cycle, and the revenue cycle? And we got to handle on that. And so we have to invest time with both Bonnie and Leslie, just asking them questions, sitting down and documenting everything we know, we need to know about the town. Once we do that, then we have to figure out how we're going to test. Because the idea behind it is, it's called a risk assessment in our business, we determine where the risk areas are, and you develop your audit program to mitigate those risks, or at least mitigate the fact of maybe missing something along the way. And that takes some additional time, too. What I wanted to share with you is that, when just going through this initial process, which I think is somewhat demanding of your people, it went well as I think it could. It was a good, nice time process, so we got things done, and it doesn't have to be done every year, because all we have to do is review it, which is good, because you don't want to do that every year. But the idea behind it is that I think I have a pretty good idea of how you guys go about doing your business in the critical internal control areas that you should be concerned with. Now, the timeline of the audit, what we usually do is we break it down into two periods. We try to come in before or shortly after year end, and then we schedule something, I think it was in October, to do the final year, the final walkthrough of the entire audit. Things that aren't sensitive to June 30th are things like the budget, debt, if there's any single audit which wasn't here, we do that. We do all our tests of transactions, which involves estimating between 25 and 30 transactions of the revenue cycle, the expenditure cycle, and the payroll cycle. And what we look for in there is adequate supporting documentation, authorization of the ability to pay, that if there's a PO used, that the amount per the PO agreed to the amount per the invoice, and that they're properly posted. And it's a hap-hazard, what we call a hap-hazard selection, there's no real systematic way of doing it, but what I can share with you is that after we documented what we believe was the design of the systems, I was able to verify that the design was working as it was supposed to, based on the transaction testing we had done, which is somewhat important for you guys when you're on that side of the desk. Another thing that I was pleased with, and I call this both in the year-end work, which essentially is we walk down the balance sheet, because we've done all this documentation of the systems, we pick it up a little bit and refresh ourselves, make sure nothing has changed, it will make our audit approach be a little different between the preliminary work and the year-end work. But we walked down the balance sheet and hit hard cash, receivables, capital assets, and the four biggest liabilities you have, which are bonds payable, you have a capital lease for the energy, I forget what it's called now, ESMA? Yep. And then you have OPEB liability and your pension liability. We also do cutoff testing for the warrants to make sure that expenditures are being classified in the proper fiscal year, but for the most part, those are the big guys out there, and we make sure they're done and they're reconciled. The biggest internal control you can have, in my opinion, is to make sure that things are reconciled and they're reconciled timely. And cash is the biggest moving part of your balance sheet, because the other stuff is kind of, gets layered on, and like an actuary does both the pension liability and an actuary does the OPEB liability. And capital leases, that's taken care of, it's like a form of debt. But when you look at the big significant risk areas, to me, the biggest one is probably cash, and we walk through that very easily, meaning that the amounts were reconciled, all the reconciling items were understandable, and the fact that there's a cash book in the treasurer's office and the general ledger, which is handled by Bonnie and Leslie, they will reconcile to each other, which is the way it's supposed to work. It doesn't always work that way in other towns, and I can tell you that for a fact. The team also was what I would call audit-ready. We have a series of checklists that we try to get to them in advance, so that when we come in- so that when we come in and look at the test of transactions, I got four piles of stuff looking at me, saying, here's the revenue testing, here's the expenditure testing, here's the payroll testing, and basically, well, we just finished, we actually worked this week for FY seventeen. There's little tabs inside telling me where to go and how to get it, which can't, doesn't get better as an auditor, because it's efficient rather than trying to flip through all kinds of stuff. So, the fact that the, Leslie and Bonnie and their, and the members of their teams were ready for us, I also felt that they exhibited what I call a sense of urgency. We're kind of like the Marines, we get in and we get out, all right? And that's the best way, we like to do it, because you don't want us hanging around too long, and we gotta be somewhat efficient in how we go about doing our work. And so, they had a sense of urgency, and what I found, when I ask a question, and we usually have curveballs a little bit, there's some stuff we have to do every year, but we always try to have a little bit of curveball, whether it be an inquiry we have or some information we might want to look at. There was no delay in getting the information. That tells me the records are organized, that tells me people know what's going on. It makes, it gives me, from a, when I take that professional skepticism, it reduces it. So it becomes, it becomes like, you begin to get credibility in what you were looking at and the people who are responsible for doing it. So, on a financial side of it, what you did from, from, I've kinda focused, just so you know this, inside the report are three different methods of accounting. Budgetary basis, modified accrual, and accrual, full accrual. I'll talk about the others, but I kinda focus on the budget, because that's how you run the town. What are your estimated receipts versus your actual collections? What are your appropriations versus your actual expenditures? And what you did budgetary-wise is you had a very small loss of two hundred seventy, two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. That was anticipated, because in your, both your ATM and your, and the subsequent vote during an STM or the beginning of the ATM, you would anticipate to use a decent amount of free cash. And by that amount is less than the amount of free cash that you appropriated. So that means basically, your operations came in better than you anticipated. Contributions, motor vehicle excise came in higher than anticipated in revenue. You got a medical reimbursement, Medicaid reimbursement, that you don't budget for, it just comes in. And you also received in chapter seventy-one money, which is the transportation money, additional funds there. So that made up for the increase, the higher-than-expected receipts for revenue. On the expense size, you came in lower by four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. And pretty much, it was, the contributions were across the board in all categories of expenses. I know that sounds like a lot, but it's only one point nine percent of your budget. So if I was grading you, that means you got a ninety-eight point, ninety-eight point one on your, on your test, which means to me, expenditures essentially came in as you expected they would. And that includes the carryforward of encumbrances also. If you were to look at the financial statements, which a lot of people don't, I understand, it's on pages fifty-six and fifty-seven. Capital asset activity, there was a little bit of activity, it was one point three million dollars. Most of it was related to infrastructure, and it was in what we call the general government. You have the general government, which includes all the operations outside, not including the sewer enterprise. And on the sewer enterprise, there were actually no additions that qualified for capitalization in fiscal sixteen. There were no new Gatsby's in sixteen. In fifteen, Gatsby sixty-eight rolled out, and that was a, that was a big one. That was the one where your entire pension liability got put on your balance sheet. Gatsby forty-five is the other big guy that's been around a little bit, that relates to your other post-employment benefits. The combination of these two totals about twenty-five million dollars on your balance sheet, which really negatively impacts what we call your net position, which for accrual purposes in municipal markets like retained earnings. And it hits it hard. But, the thing I will tell you, and I wanna talk a little bit more about it in the next segment, is that these amounts have been very well vetted by the rating agencies. They know exactly what these numbers were. Before Gatsby sixty-eight came along, they knew how, the size of your unfunded liability. It wasn't shown on the face of your financial statements, it was shown in the footnotes though. Same thing with the OPEB. While that number eventually is gonna get on the full amount, it's gonna be on the face of the financial statements, it's also disclosed in the, the notes of the financial statements, and there's something called required supplementary information, it's also disclosed there. So they, they understand this. And again, I talked a little bit about that. So, what does all this mean to me? And I look at the results, number one, no adjustments necessary to be made to the books, which means our audit procedures didn't require Leslie to book anything that had one, I mean, everything was fine. We do no audit adjustments and/or permanent adjustments that were needed to be made. To me, that's significant, because that means any information that you're getting during the course of the fiscal year, it's very accurate. I mentioned that we test journal entries. I have situations where there's hundreds and hundreds of journal entries, and that's because a lot of times, people are constantly making mistakes, which is usually because the design of the system isn't sufficient to accurately post expenditures in our revenues. Her journal entries were very few, very few, and most of the time, it's just maybe moving an expense from the general fund to a grant or something like that, or a trust fund. So, that means the information you were getting was accurate. The financial statements themselves, they're in accordance with GAAP, all right? We own two pages of the entire report, which is our opinion. And you got what's called an unqualified opinion, in layman's terms, that means a clean opinion. Everything is the way it's supposed to be, from the foot, from the, from the MDNA to the actual financial statements themselves, to the footnote, and to the required supplementary information. Everything is appropriate and the way, so that somebody could pick up the town of West Boylston's financial statements, and hopefully, another town's financial statements can match apples and apples. I mentioned off, before, and I'll mention it again, it was a good, clean audit. You know, I'm a businessman, too. We have to, you know, basically try to make money the way we can. And the cooperation with the staff and the way they gave us information certainly made that happen for us this time around. And there's no issues in internal controls that I can tell you about. You don't wanna hear terms like deficiency, significant deficiency, or material weakness come out of my mouth, and it certainly wasn't the case here. If you read the report, we're in the business of negative assurance. We don't say things are good, we basically say things, nothing went wrong. But it, this is the kind of report that is as good as you can get. The last report that I have is the management letter, this is something we own. I actually think this is a good management letter, it's kinda like you say, thin to win. There were no internal control issues, as I mentioned, and I made four recommendations or four observations. One is, I was asking Leslie to break out the private purpose trust funds. Just for easy reporting, they were combing with some other funds, not an issue in terms of the balances, but just an easy way to identify and manage them. Under the Single Audit Act, which you guys aren't subject to, because you spend less than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expenditures, but you do get federal grants, the special education, the title one. Uniform Guidance came out last year, it was the big bang, and turned, it took away the term A one thirty-three and made it called Uniform Guidance. And what it did was say, if you are an entity that receives federal grants, you have to have documented the internal controls for the administration of those federal grants. Now, I'm gonna guess that your folks do a pretty good job. Institutionally, you know how you're supposed to do it. When anybody comes in, like I think special education usually gets looked at every three years, the reports probably aren't that big, but this is saying that if you don't have that, they could ding you. And so, what our recommendation is, there's plenty of examples out there, even Masbo has an example. They put together a template for all the schools, districts in Massachusetts. Something like that for your major grants is what's important. The two biggest ones, if I remember correctly, is special education and title one. I mentioned that there's a future Gatsby coming down the road, Gatsby seventy-five, that will be in eighteen's financial statements. It's similar to Gatsby sixty-eight, where, under the current Gatsby forty-five, you recognize on your balance sheet a liability for the difference between what you're supposed to put in or pay for the OPEB liability based on the actuary report and what you actually pay to retirees. That delta incrementally gets added to a liability on your balance sheet. At the end of June sixteen, that was ten point seven million dollars. The unfunded liability is nearly thirty million dollars. So what we'll do with eighteen, and there'll be a new actuary report, they're gonna scrape off these ten and stick on the thirty million. And that's, that's what essentially happened with Gatsby sixty-eight. Under Gatsby sixty-eight, when you made your payments to Worcester County Retirement System, as long as you made your, they got the letter and you paid the amount you were supposed to pay, there was no liability on your financial statements. Footnoted in, it was recognized in the footnotes, but not on the face of the financial statements. Gatsby sixty-eight said, take that liability and stick it on the front of the financial statements. And finally, there was one comment which did come to fruition. Under this, it's called an eight oh five report, it's what determines the pension liability for Worcester County and then allocates it to all the participants. The dating of the eight oh five report is a problem for a lot of the municipal light plants in Massachusetts, because there's a thirty-month-and-a-day requirement between the actual measurement date and the actual reporting date. The twelve thirty-one, two thousand sixteen's reports were outside of that date, and what I said in the management letter, it was gonna have a qualified opinion. Leslie sent me the report maybe, I don't know, a month ago, and it does have a qualification in the opinion, which will just slightly modify the report that we issued, because in our report, we specifically take no responsibility for the financial statements of the other auditors, but we make reference to them. I don't think that's a big deal, in terms of the rating agencies, but it's just something like, nobody wants a qualified report. And they get stuck between a rock and a hard place, and I'm not really sure what the ultimate solution's gonna be for that. It may be an other, every other year type of thing. So, a few hundred hours worth of work, that about wraps up in about fifteen minutes. I'm more than happy to take any questions that you might have.
First of all, I want to thank Leslie and Bonnie for a great job, absolutely great, thank you so much. Okay, questions? Pat, you, you feel?
Two questions.
You're the CPA.
Transaction testing, did you find any exceptions?
No, no, it was really, it was really.
Very rare.
I gotta tell you, you should have seen, I'll tell you, I'll give you the revenue cycle. So we pick a particular thing that comes on a turnover. Now, on that turnover are multiple things, all right? So we get the turnover, that rolls up to a summary statement, that summary statement then rolls to a deposit slip, then the deposit slip goes into the bank, and then I get, and basically, we're able to trace all that. Same thing with the expenditures. Usually, there's a voucher, a department turnover, another sheet that says what account it's supposed to go to, the invoice itself, and a copy of the check all stapled together for me. It was like, it doesn't get better than that. So, no, we didn't have any exceptions.
And the other question was, you said Bonnie and Leslie did such a great job, and you were able to make money. Are you gonna go down?
He. I didn't say how much money. No, I, I think you guys got a competitive fee from us, I actually don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I'm sure.
It was a little too much.
We're, we're pretty competitive, we try to be.
We don't either, but it was too much.
Okay, yeah.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, next is the public hearing conformity with the requirements of the general bylaws of the town of West Boylston, Article twenty-three, public hearing notice, consider amendments to policy, selectmen's policy, one point three policy on public notice within town hall.
The town clerk had proposed this change to the policy, she wasn't able to be here tonight, so if you don't mind, I'll just kinda walk you through the proposed changes within the policy.
No problem. Should we read the notice? Do we need to read the notice in ten minutes, or that's what we usually do?
We usually do read the notice, yeah.
I have it here. Public notice is hereby given in conform with the requirements of the general bylaws of the town of West Boylston, Article, what number was that? Twenty-three, public hearing notice, and the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, June seventh, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty PM, for the purpose of considering amended policy on three, policy on public notice within town hall. Meeting will be held in the Selectment's meeting room, number two ten, of the municipal office building, one forty, Worcester Street, West Boylston. For additional information or review of proposed information, please contact the Office of the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator. Any interested persons, groups, agencies are invited to attend, and this was posted the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. Thank you.
Basically, what we're doing in these proposed edits are, one, clarifying the location of the two bulletin boards that we've had since the town moved into this building. And those are the boards located directly across from the elevator on the first floor. Just clarified the language to make it easier for people to understand their locations. The second change is the addition of a third bulletin board, which the town clerk is calling the Town Clerk Informational Advisory Bulletin Board. And this would be located just outside the office of the town clerk, which she would have full control over its content. It's basically just meant to provide information to the public regarding policies, procedures of the town clerk's office and other offices. And as people who have, have seen the sample bulletin board that's out there during the election process, there was quite a bit of information about the elections themselves, the ballots, et cetera. So, basically, it is the addition of this bulletin board into the policy, and that's it for the changes.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a great idea, I mean, because she usually has it taped on the door, taped on the wall. This way, here it's in one place, in that main bulletin board behind glass, just doesn't have room for that information. This is right outside of her office, so I think this is a, is a great idea, adding that board.
Mr. Thomas from board? Mr. Thomas from Hallmark? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want your motion to approve the changes?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law one thirty-eight, second, five A and five B, request for alteration of premises from Keepers Incorporated, one seventy-five, West Boylston.
Board of Selectmen of the town of West Boylston will hold a public hearing, a request from Keepers Incorporated, one seventy-five, West Boylston Street, West Boylston, Mass, for an alteration of premises for their restaurant all alcohol pouring license. The public hearing will be held Wednesday, June seventh, two thousand seventeen, at seven forty-five in the Selectment's meeting room of the town hall, one forty, West Boylston Street. The spoils that all interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend, and it was posted on May twenty-fourth.
Chairman, want to come up?
Good evening.
Hello.
Do you want me to ask that? What we're looking for is, we're gonna do some renovations over at Keepers. The main renovations, and I don't know if you all have a copy of what, makes sense? Okay, is, we added a sandwich, a sandwich station in the main bar, which really has nothing to do with the alcohol, but we're gonna add another bar in the back, father's back room of Keepers. That's, and that's why we have to have this hearing, is because we're changing the location of, I guess, where we store the liquor. And that's why the ABCC requires us to have a hearing. So that's what I'm looking for, is just to be allowed to change the license so we can add that bar. The other bar that was already there is staying the same, but changing some of the seating capacity. Actually, the seating capacity's going down, as compared to what it was. And that's really it, there's nothing much more complicated than that.
Okay. There was a couple of questions from the fire department and the board of health, we had letters, do we have a?
I believe the fire department is all set. There was a letter from the fire chief, that he's received everything he needs and he's all set. The board of health, I believe Kevin went to the board of health today and brought his new plans. You should have an email in your packet. He received the plans for the deli station that they submitted. Let me just attach this, the plan for the deli station that Kevin submitted to us this afternoon. I know there were some questions regarding whether or not he had started building anything. He's built the frame counter to hold the refrigerated, refrigeration units in his proposed deli section. Based off of the last time I was in there, roughly one month ago, there was a spot for the hand sink, but that wasn't installed. He's also started to replace the floor around the current bar area. The new proposed bar area has not been started at this time. So, it's basically two changes as Kevin proposed.
The email we have from last Wednesday was that they've started to install a deli slicer section, and have not submitted plans for this section yet, and now you have?
Today, yes.
Yes.
Yes. And the sink hasn't been installed, it has to have a hand sink. It hasn't been installed, because I'm gonna just bring the plumber in when I get the bar done, because I have to do all kinds of plumbing there, because I have to put in sinks and cocktail units, you know, where you put the ice, and that kinda thing, in the, behind the bar. So, to be honest with you, to save money, I don't wanna take out like, two or three different permits for plumbing when I can just have them come in and take out one, and you can do the whole job. But I, and we haven't started building the bar yet, because. But I, and we haven't started building the bar yet because till I get your approval, uh, the bar would do me no good. I could, I could sit people at it, but I couldn't have a bartender, and I couldn't have any liquor there. We'd just like be sitting at a, at a bar looking at TVs.
So, this is just, you need our approvals now so you can proceed with your renovations?
Yes, I, I've already built a deli station because really, that has nothing to do with alcohol.
Right.
That was just, I mean, the building inspector was there today. We went through the whole thing. He had, I had already seen him, gave him the same plan that you have, and, uh, but he came today and walked through, and then I saw the Board of Health today, and I saw the fire chief the other day, um, I don't know, I've seen everybody lately, so, um, everybody seems satisfied that everything's fine. Again, the bar hasn't been even started because there's no sense of building it unless they get approval. The bill-
Questions from the board?
So, every, well, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
So, everybody is all set. So, what we're voting on tonight is the liquor part, correct, because you're changing how and how it's set up?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the A.B.C.C., Nancy can maybe correct me, she's the real professional here, but the A.B.C.C. requires when you change where you're going to store liquor.
Oh, okay.
And now, we're going to store behind the new bar. If we're going to store the liquor, then we have to, um, they have to know about it.
Okay.
And now, we're changing the storage theoretically of the liquor. Even though we could serve people there before, it's not going to be stored there because it'll be behind the bar.
This first public hearing is just for the, to move-
The alter-
Storage of liquor.
Correct, yes.
Is that correct?
It's actually termed alteration of premises.
I'll agree with you.
So, it happens at you as the local licensing authority. If you approve this, then we send everything off to the A.B.C.C., and once they approve it, then we can amend the license to reflect the new storage area.
But they don't care about the slicer area that there was no plans for at this point. All they care, right, really, all we're approving is the change to the, the bar piece.
Correct.
Uh, is that the Board of Health has to approve it, or it, the Board of Health?
Board of Health, um, plans have been submitted to the Board of Health?
But it's not approved, right?
Well, they can't prove it's not built yet.
It's not, they're, they're working with them to build the bar in conformity with the plans. So, his, oh, the email has been satisfied by the update of today, and he- Yes. -can't move forward to build until the second step happens, and he gets the rest of the items.
And then, the Board of Health will come in again because I have to get their final-
Right.
Final approval because, on the bar, because I have, because of the water, and, you know, I have to have the right temperature and the right flow and all of the, the ice has to be in the right place, and, you know, ice can't be touching glasses, and glasses can't be touching bottles, and there's a whole bunch of things you have to do, but that'll be behind the bar, and when that happens, they'll be in again.
So, as of today, the Board of Health is fine?
With the deli station that has really nothing to do with this hearing, but-
That's all the Board of Health is, is talking on the deli station, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay, is there a hearing? Is it, does the public, does the Board of Health have a hearing coming up in regards to this, or?
It's for the other location.
Yeah, it keep, Finders, yes.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, they received the plans today. They may have a public hearing, they may be having a hearing, right?
I'm not sure if they have a hearing-
I don't know how they go about it, and, uh, clearly, you know, the Board of Health says, uh, did not say, you know, that's everything is clear.
Right, it's got nothing to do with what he's in front of us for. It's got nothing to do with what he's in front of us for, on this hearing, it's got nothing to do with it.
That's right.
This is, this is just for a trip where it stores the liquor. He's changing the storage place, so he has to come in front of us to change.
And I do have one other question, see now, it's, looks like, you know, we are, we are having another public hearing. It looks like the name is going to be changed. My question is, is this business owe any money to the town?
Again, this is, this is the next, the next public hearing. This is not, this is public hearing. This is for, this is public hearing.
But this is related, right? It's going to be the Keepers.
And the next one, the next one will be a change, a different hearing.
But this is related. When you give the, um, that's, that's what I want to clear it.
Okay, well, as far as I understand, this is just for the storage, this, this hearing right here is just for the storage.
Because we're changing how it looks, because we're changing how it looks.
So, I, I think we-
In the way the liquor's going to be stored.
I think we should concentrate on that, and then go, move on to the next one.
I'd make a motion to approve the alterations to Keepers Incorporated, one-seventy-five West Paulston Street.
One second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
One other thing before we continue on, um, we have-
I have, yeah, I have all your things here. I'll give them to you. Do you want them now?
No, you can pass, I'll get them, thank you.
All right, so we gotta wait.
We have to close that public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is any other thing from the public on it? All right, now I'm-
Motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
You want to close?
Oh, public hearing, yes.
All right. So, now, we need a motion. We already did that motion. We, we did it backwards, is that right?
We didn't close the public hearing first.
But the next item that you're going to be looking at does not require a public hearing.
No.
It's not a requirement of the A.B.C.C., it's just action by the local licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen.
So, we can do it now?
Oh, okay.
Doesn't have to wait.
There's no time constraint.
So, but we did the closing, the public hearing.
We just did it backwards.
Okay?
You needed a public hearing on the alteration of premises. You've done that, you opened it, you closed it, that's perfect.
Okay.
Now, we're going to move on to the second request, which was-
All right. In accordance with Mass General Law one thirty-eight, section fifteen A and B, request from change of D.B.A. from Keepers Incorporated, one-seventy-five West Paulston Street to Keepers Incorporated, D.B.A. McCormick and Mortels Grill and Spirits. And there's nothing, no public hearing, so. All right.
Just going to change the name. It's, we're changing how it looks inside, not dramatically, you know, paint and cleaning it up and a few other things like that, but we're going to change the name, um, because if you don't, when you want to make a change, everybody still thinks it's Keepers, uh, and they'll expect the same that was at Keepers, where this is going to be different. I, uh, McCormick and Motel's going to have a much more limited menu, um, type scenario and a different kind of menu. So, that's why we, um, are asking for, to do a D.B.A. Just change that D.B.A. That's all. We were a D.B.A., we weren't even a D.B.A. before because we did it under the same name as the corporation. Now, we're asking for a D.B.A. change.
All right, um, does anybody have discussion on this?
I just, I tried to get some answers to the, some questions I had in regards to this, um, issue about changing the name of the restaurant because of some issues the Keepers part of the restaurant is in. If we were to change the name, if we would have any issues with making changes to a business that's in bankruptcy. And I was, and I don't, I didn't, wasn't able to get that answer, so I, I don't know if we can, or if it's, you know, we're taking away something that's locked in the bankruptcy court.
We did receive a very brief response from the treasurer's attorney, um, just before the meeting started this evening, and the question that she had posed to the attorney was, um, if, if there are still funds owed to the town, um, in terms of taxes or fees, um, would the bankruptcy filing, um, prevent the town from still seeking those funds or fees if they're not automatically paid? Um, there isn't a payment agreement yet that we're aware of for the old D.B.A. Would the change in D.B.A. make any change in our ability to go and, and, um, request relief, to receive those payments? And the brief response from the attorney this evening was that the town can petition the court for relief from the automatic stay if we're not paid the amounts owed to the town.
But he doesn't say if we change the name. He just says we are able-
It did talk about the change in D.B.A.
But his answer doesn't say if we change the name, he just says that we could, the town-
The question asked, would, would the change in the D.B.A. prevent the town from seeking relief? And he's saying no, that it's fine, that we can petition the court for relief from the automatic stay, even with the change in the D.B.A.
I, I, I just had, it's just unclear to me, so I, I would ask our town council, I don't know, is that a phone call or a quick email?
We can send an email tomorrow morning.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'd just ask that we, we put off, this isn't a public hearing, just put this off to a future meeting, and then just get, get clarification on that before we vote on the change.
Well, rather than do that, I mean, why don't we vote on it and, and have to visit it again, as condition upon town council saying it's not going to affect us i- in any dealings with the business?
Personally, I, until I see the answer, I can't vote one way or the other. I can't say conditional on that because-
Court decision.
There's other things that town council says to us that we just need to discuss. That would be my, that would be my thought. I, I think he can still move forward. We, we did allow the Keepers Incorporated, now the next item is to change the name, so, um, I think he can still move forward.
Thank you.
Keepers Incorporated is still Keepers Incorporated. That's not changing. Keepers Incorporated still owns everything, owns the license, owns everything. We're just going to be called something different, like Finders Inc. Let me give you an example. Finders. Finders Inc. owns Finders. It's F.Y.N.D.E.R.S. Inc. But it does business as Finders, F.I.N.D.E.R.S. Pub. Finders Inc. is what owns the company, and what any legal dealings have. Keepers Inc. is what owns the company, and all legal dealings that have to do with Keepers Inc. have nothing to do with the new name. The name is just what we call it. It, it's not, that's not, we're not changing the corporation, we're not changing the corporation at all, we're just calling it a different name for the public, the corporation state, we're not, i- if we wanted to change the corporation, we'd have to have another public hearing, that's another whole big enchilada, but we're not asking for that. The corporation is staying, Keepers Inc. Still owns the company, still has the license, it's just does business as McCormick and Motels. It has no lea-, McCormick and Motels has no legal bearing, except for when I went to the town clerk to get, uh, whatever I had to get there, a, a D.B.A. certificate.
That will change.
All it, no, all it does is allow me to write, get a checking account under that name.
The D.B.A.
Well, I'm not even going to do that. We keep it as Keepers because it's Keepers. All my liquor accounts are still Keepers Inc. They're not under this name. If you go to the A.B.C.C., it's, Keepers Inc. has the license, not McCormick and Motels.
I see.
So, it's not like we, we didn't ask to change the corporation, we're just changing what perception to the public is of our name, that's all.
From, from a tax standpoint, I have many businesses that are, they're, their legal name on their tax return has no bearing on, on what they operate as in a D.B.A. Thinking about this, a D.B.A. certificate is issued by the town you do business in. So, it, it's, that's real, the D.B.A. certificate, correct or wrong, that's just something from within this town.
And I already have one of them.
Right, so that's, that's something that we do outside of this town.
I got a friend at town clerk.
The D.B.A. certificate doesn't mean anything.
Right. Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Also, there are many, um, corporations that have ten or twenty D.B.A.s under their name, knowing, um, being in the financial banking industry, that many people will come in and have many D.B.A.s under that, and it's all still going back to the ownership of the company. Um, so I think that's very important, and I don't see, um, why we couldn't move forward on this myself. I, I'm satisfied with the answer that we've got.
Well, I don't think the, after what Mr. McCormick told us, I don't think the, the answer had, has anything to do with what we asked. He's not, he's only changing the D.B.A.
That's all.
Not, not anything to do with the, the courts or anything, so-
No.
I don't think that, that, that answer's even really-
The court is, what it is is what it is.
They still, they still say this.
They're coming, everything, did, all the dealings with the town and anything are still under Keeper's name.
Correct, I see.
They have nothing to do with McCormick and Motels.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So.
Any other discussion on this?
No.
Any other motion?
So moved to make the change from, uh, I guess the only change is the D.B.A. of Keepers Incorporated is now McCormick and Motels Grill and Spirits.
No. No, that is what I did wrong, because it's not Keeper's name.
I think-
Keeper's Inc. D.B.A.
I think you're just changing the D.B.A. to, you're saying, I, my opinion-
No, I'm just saying it reads here to, uh, change to Keepers Inc., D.B.A., McCormick and Motels.
Yes, 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 that's correct.
Does anybody understand that?
Yeah.
Second, give me a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before I leave, I-
Any, any idea when, when-
Any open?
The new change will be opened?
Tomorrow.
Is it all done?
Uh, it's supposed to be, I gotta hear these out, I made these pretty fast.
It looks good.
Um, it was supposed to be open on, uh, St. Patrick's Day, so. I'm getting it, because I get enough energy to build it. My energy level's a lot higher, so, we're moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, new business.
We use all the things for this. So bad.
Uh, request for common vehicle license from, uh, from Jim, Queen, Yale, is that sound right?
Go.
Go?
Go.
Go, for a new restaurant on one eighty-four West Paulston Street, Michael. Come on up. How you doing, my friend?
Good.
Make a pitch so we can, uh-
Hmm, I just, for location for the one eighty-four, um, Paulston Street, the China Express, I want to change in a, a name for the Miku.
You change, you've taken over the China Express, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And it's going to be Miko?
Aye, aye.
M- Miko, that is?
Miku.
Miku, okay. And, uh, hours? Your hours? Hours, open?
Open, when you're going to be open?
Uh, I try this open for tomorrow, for maybe for tomorrow and Friday.
Are you going to be open like noon to eight, or six o'clock at night?
Oh, it's, it's eleven to nine, either.
Eleven to nine, every day?
Um, that's for the, um, Monday to Thursday, it's eleven to the, um, nine thirty. Uh, Friday and Saturday is eleven to ten thirty. That Sunday, we have a twelve thirty to night.
Have you experienced in doing this before? Have you done this before, restaurant?[1673.62]
Yeah.
And do we hear from the police or anybody else?
Um.
Do you have to? Okay.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. Nancy, um, had asked the police chief Dennis Minnick to, um, be in touch with, um, Mr. Gao on this. And he tried numerous times to get in touch. Um, Nancy also reached out again to you, um, to encourage you to take his call. But the chief, um, went to the location, it was closed, locked at the time. Tried again to, to call and has not had the opportunity to speak to anyone in detail about this. Um, so the chief at this point is not supporting the application. Um, he is concerned about what appears to be a language barrier that he feels may not be in the public's best interest. And his concern is that if a customer were to come into the, the, um, the business and have an issue, whether it's a safety issue or a medical issue, that, um, that there's no, um, way for them to fully express what the level of the concern or the issue is. It might not be able to be expressed properly to your staff. Um, and that the public may not be able to be served, um, as needed to in those safety or medical issues. So, at this time, the chief is not in support of this application.
So, do you understand what he, that we, they're saying?
Uh, I'm not.
The chief is concerned that, um, that the ability to communicate clearly with the customers, both you or your staff speaking to the customers, or the staff speaking to, or the customer speaking to you or your staff, that there would be an inability to understand and communicate. And his concern, what he as police chief is responsible for ensuring, is the safety of the public as respect to their ability to go in and out of that, that business. His concern is that there appears to be a significant language barrier, inability to understand what is being said, to the, to the degree that he cannot be assured that if a customer were to come into the restaurant and if they were to have a problem, if they had a safety issue, or if they were having a medical emergency, that they weren't, they would not be able to be clearly understood by the staff at the restaurant so that they could receive some help. And absent his having a comfort level about that ability to communicate any safety concerns, he can't be in support of the application until he feels for certain that there is the ability to communicate easily back and forth between customers and whoever's working at the restaurant.
Something, uh, speak English not very well, or, or, uh, something, I don't know.
Can I ask, please? Just, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Will you be the person running the business and be there all the time, only you, or will it be other? The manager or anybody else?
Yeah, we have a, uh, uh, myself, uh, my wife, uh, have a, a cashier.
Right.
Many, many people.
I, I think the issue, uh, the chief and the board needs someone that can understand us better to help you understand what our concerns are. So, I think we should, the best thing would be to delay this for two weeks to, and come in with someone that can understand what, what the police chief is talking about and meet with the police chief upfront so we can get all these items straightened out.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, is the fire department or Board of Health also been in to look at these things? And what it, what if, do they have concerns?
The fire department is coming before.
My understanding is that they are all set with the building inspector. I didn't see them outside, sorry. They... Yes, they're all set, they paid their taxes, the fire chief is all set, they have no issue. They inspected them on Monday, June fifth. And, um, the Board of Health is fine. They, initially, they wanted to open up today and they didn't, they forgot this step in the process. And after they pay the Board of Health, they're all fine.
Uh, I come for, uh, building department many time. I talked to, uh, how can I do, uh, open the restaurant? But I don't know the, for here, that, this.
Sir?
Sir, can I? Is this a new business or he's going to buy the China Express?
Yeah, I buy the China Express.
But we have, we have to, uh, follow concerns of our police chief. 'Cause if something happens to a customer, is choking or something like that, and you can't call 911 and express what's happening, then it puts liability back in the town. And that's what we're concerned about.
Yeah, we have another, uh, we, we, we have a CBR, CBR, uh, license.
Do you have other restaurants? Do you have another restaurant? Is this your first?
I have a, before have a Connecticut.
You have one too.
Yeah.
Do you have one now? Or only this one?
It's, it's gone already.
It's gone?
The Connecticut is gone already. This, this one is the second one, but, uh, only this one. Now, just only this one.
Okay.
I guess.
My understanding is that China Express closed?
Oh, I buy the, he not closed before. I buy it, but I, I closed, uh, uh, and take a floor change like this.
He bought the restaurant?
Yep, I buy the restaurant.
He bought the business.
Oh, he bought the business, the business.
Yes, I buy the business.
The property belonged to?
And again, I, I can't see how we can proceed without.
I just.
Chief of Police.
Well, I would, I would possibly, I mean, we mentioned this before, make a motion to, um, grant the license, but not, it won't be given or signed by us until the chief. I mean, I guess his only issue's gonna be is if, if this gentleman tells him that there's gonna be other people in the restaurant that are gonna be able to help with this issue, I think.
I agree with Mr. Luttrell. I don't think we should, we should hold this off for two weeks when this is something that could be fixed in a day or two and, and he can open up. And to hold off his livelihood for two weeks when the chief may be okay tomorrow if he actually sits down with him, I think it makes sense to do that.
All right. That would be my motion.
So, conditional upon approval and release by the police chief?
Anybody else has signed off or?
Well, everybody else is done, so it's just the chief. Sir, if I could just say, you need to meet with the police chief.
What police chief?
You need to meet with him.
Or you can't open.
So, you won't get the license. So, you need to contact the police chief, sit down, talk to him, maybe have the manager or the other people at the restaurant meet with the chief.
Okay.
So, I'm sure somebody, they will tell them how to do that.
If you, if you could, um, ca-, call the police department tomorrow.
The police department, I think he called me today. But I don't know what happened at the question. Is he, he say somebody, he called me like my restaurant, uh, somebody closed, closed. I don't know who closed. Maybe it's somebody inside, uh, for, for, not working, working for, uh, uh.
And that could be, but what we would, what we're suggesting is that tomorrow you call the police department and ask to speak to the police chief. And set up a meeting with him so that you can discuss his concerns. And I would urge you to find someone to go with you that could help with the conversation so that he can, you know, he can understand what you're saying and that he, you can understand what he's saying. So, if you could bring someone with you.
Okay.
Okay, that has a, you know, is able to speak, you know, without restrictions.
Okay.
So, we have a, a motion, a second with.
We had a.
I'll second.
Yeah, with the restriction that the police chief has to sign off. Are we gonna sign the license now or just hold it?
I think we can, we can sign it and Nancy won't give it though until we get that letter. Yeah, either way, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem signing mine. I mean, anybody else can go back.
Any discussion?
I have just one.
Good.
So, I just wanna make sure that you understand, you cannot open until you have that meeting with the chief of police.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
I need a call tomorrow, right?
Yes, 'cause you can't open.
Yeah.
Until that situation is solved.
So, when you, when you, tomorrow, I call the police chief, he.
And set up a meeting. You'll need to set up a meeting to actually go to the police department and meet with him.
Oh, meet with him, sir.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I don't know. Yeah, I, I come in the, I talked to the building department for somebody call to me. How can I for open? I need a, what can I do, do something? I don't know how can I do.
Yeah.
The best time for here, I don't know.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, just meet with the chief of police and he'll work something out.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Consider approving a change in step for Michael Young from step one, grade two F, thirteen eighty-three per hour to step two, grade two F, fifteen twenty, fifteen dollars and twenty cents per hour as he has attained EMT.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consider approving the hiring of Christopher Belcedo as a seasonal employee for the Department of Public Works effective June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, for a term not to extend beyond October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, at the rate of eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I just, I could, I'll just ask a question on this. Now, this is the, the seasonal person?
Yes.
Okay, we, in the past, we've talked about, now he comes on in June when the fields are almost, Little League's over, now it's just public use parks. We've talked in the past of bringing him on earlier in the year, now we're going back to June.
Now, we advertised that there could be an earlier start. We didn't have anybody apply for the job. He was the first individual to apply for the job, so we'll bring him on for the remainder of the season. No one applied for the job earlier.
We're gonna go from April first to October one, one time?
Yeah, 'cause I think, things do kinda slow down. I know that there's still work to be done.
Do we need it?
No one wants to work between the busy. Um, so this could, this can't go beyond the October thirty-first.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
We did.
Do we do?
Yeah.
I'll have a discussion, that's fair discussion.
Discussion, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I hope that if he, um, might come back first and then we can hire him earlier next year. Might be something if it works out well.
As long as they date, uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Consider voting to sign chapter ninety product amendment request for, for the amount of two thousand seventy-five dollars from previously approved products, including Prescott, Newton, Lowell, P.S., Goodell, Whistler Street, uh, Woodland, Winthrop Streets in the Woodland Prospect intersection.
Mr. Chairman, um, basically, this two.
Additional two thousand and seventy-five dollars, um, is the cost of the additional police state that has been determined necessary for the projects to be safely done.
And so, I'll come with that chapter ninety money?
Yes.
Okay. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Green community fuel efficient vehicle policy, excuse me, policy, anti, uh, island policy and next steps.
Right, so as the board had tasked myself, um, and Norma Chanis, a volunteer, um, earlier this year, we have been looking into the feasibility of the town applying for the Green Communities designation with the state. And there is, um, there are five criteria that we have to, um, show that we can achieve. And one of them is the acceptance of this fuel policy. And basically, the acceptance of this fuel policy, conditional upon the Green Communities program, um, says that the town would purchase only fuel efficient vehicles whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. It excludes many of the vehicles we run, meaning our public safety vehicles, our heavy duty DPW vehicles are excluded from this policy. So, there's very few actual vehicles that would be, um, required to meet this new obligation. But the obligation is that when we do replace the vehicles that are not exempt, that we look to, um, the EPA's list of the acceptable fuel efficient vehicles and look to purchase one of those when practicable. If it's not practicable, the town is not obligated to do so. But what it's trying to do is to incentivize communities to look to try to purchase the vehicles that have better miles per gallon.
If we, if we become, is there grant money out there for some of this stuff?
Yes, there is. We'll, we'll be providing a more detailed summary, um, but we're trying to check these items off one at a time. But if we were to achieve the Green Communities designation, we would have an upfront, one-time-by-right payment of us, to us, about approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we could use towards identified, um, energy efficiency projects, whether it's a building-related project or purchase of a vehicle or what have you. Um, and then annually, we'd be eligible for the competitive grant funds that they put out each year.
And the anti-idling policy, do we have that? Do we have one now?
I don't have that before you tonight because it's not a mandatory policy that you accept. So, we'll be looking at that when we look at some of the other, other factors.
Do you know if the, uh, police cruisers are an exempted vehicle?
The police cruisers are exempt.
From the, from becoming, buying a fuel.
From, from having to purchase the EPA list of, um, acceptable vehicles.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or just?
If we could do a motion, we'd both.
Make a motion to accept the Green Community Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dog park update?
Okay, we do have a, a memo in your packet from the, um, Open Space Implementation Committee's Dog Park subgroup. And, um, this is just meant to be a brief update tonight so that you know what they've been working on. As you know, they had identified a portion of land that's owned by the town on the lower section of Tibnan Drive. And that was determined to be not feasible for development as a dog park because the municipal light plant is looking to do further expansion of their solar field that's there at that location. Uh, they then looked to see if it might be possible to, um, create an agreement with the sheriff's department for land that they own further up the hill on the other side, and that was not feasible. Uh, so now they are coming back to look and get another piece of town-owned land, um, at the, still on Tibnan Drive that's closer to the Boilston Town Line. So, they wanted you to know that they've been plugging away, trying to find an appropriate parcel of land. Uh, they'll be coming back to give you a, a more detailed summary and ask for your support of a parcel of land, either at our June twenty-first meeting or our July nineteenth meeting, whenever they're ready. So, they are plugging away at this. I think the one thing that I'd really like to stress is that they've been doing an excellent job in getting the message out there to the public. As you know, we've spoken about the fact that we would need to have a plan be developed by an engineer to apply for these grant funds, and that was going to cost one thousand two hundred dollars. They, this subgroup has already raised five hundred and forty dollars toward that one thousand two hundred dollar fee. So, it's obviously a very motivated group, and I'm looking forward to having them come back to do a more formal presentation.
How much land they are looking for?
I believe it was approximately, uh, three acres, but I can't remember for sure, Raj. Not sure.
Three acres.
All right, don't worry.
So, which one?
All right. WBPA TV reorganization proposal.
Right. Um, as you heard John Schluthy, um, mention earlier this evening, I have put together a proposal for reorganization of the cable TV program. Um, and I just wanted to put this out before you tonight as an FYI. This will be, um, for your June twenty-first, um, agenda for more formal discussion. But I wanted to give you an initial summary of what it is that I'm looking at with the reorganization. Um, it basically would involve, um, clarification of the pay coordinator position. As you know, um, that pay coordinator position is open. I will be interviewing candidates for that position and hope to have a recommendation for appointment at our next meeting. I'm also looking to, um, clarify the, um, the equipment coordinator position. Uh, this was, um, it's a position being held currently, um, by Rich Sanorano. We really did not have a formal job description for this before. It was just a very brief mention of the sort of duties. So, by better, better qualifying the charge of the pay coordinator, better qualifying the charge of the equipment coordinator, combined with the two approved job descriptions we already have for production assistant and the access coordinator, I think we, it will clarify for everyone's sake the roles and responsibilities of everyone working within the cable program. Additionally, I think an, an, almost an equally important part of this is, um, revision of the pay board. The pay board, um, currently is basically self-appointed. Um, the, the roles, responsibilities, um, has been established, has not been reviewed several years. Conditions have certainly changed within the cable program since then. Uh, what I'm gonna be suggesting is that we establish it as a five-member board appointed by the town administrator. Uh, so that there's a clear appointing authority, there's clear supervisory authority established there. And, um, I'm asking that the selectmen appoint a liaison to be on that board. I'd like the, the voting members of the board to be, um, representatives of the different interest groups that would likely help us populate the cable programming. So, it'd be a senior citizen representative, a school representative, a sports team representative, and two citizens at large. And I think that by having individuals from those groups, it will help us gain better recognition for the ability of the cable program to provide, um, good identification for those different groups, provide good content for our programming on our channels. So, um, this is what I'm aiming for. I'll be bringing this back as a formal discussion at the June twenty-first meeting. And if anyone has any questions about it in the meantime, please contact me and I'll be there to discuss it.
Any discussion? Very good. Okay, uh, let's see, we're, consider summer schedule, one meeting per month in July and August, the third Wednesday of the month.
Is that, is that gonna affect, uh, the, the warrants? I mean, do, are they gonna be considered timely voted on if we do it once a month, the, the payable warrants? Is that gonna be an issue?
That's a good question. I'll double-check with, um, Leslie on that. But I assume as long as there's a, a vote, conditional vote, that'd be, could be fine. It's my understanding that the way the law was set up was that the person who's delegated to approve the warrants just has to report out at the next meeting.
And with the next two schedules, I mean, July and August is, that's sufficient?
We, we do have, um, the need to have a, a meeting of the selectmen in early July because we do have the year-end transfers that need to be approved, along with a vote of the finance committee and checking with the town accountant. If the board were to have a very quick meeting, the same night, just before the fist meeting on July twelfth, um, you'd be able to satisfy that requirement of approving the year-end transfers. And so, you could forego having that normally scheduled. And so you could forego having that normally scheduled meeting the week of July fourth.
And the rest of business is okay, have those two months?
We would put it off to the later part of the month.
So it would be the, it looks like it would be the nineteenth and the sixteenth?
Correct, it would just be the third Wednesday of the month that we'd be meeting for both July and for August.
And we'll go back to regular meetings?
And we'll go back in September to the rate of the schedule.
But in July, we have a FIS meeting on the twelfth?
Yes, second Wednesday of each month.
Yeah, no problem. Every time we try to do this, as long as I've been on the board, it usually remains one and something happens.
Yeah, it's too long.
But let's take a shot, I guess.
Try that.
As long as we can fit what needs to be done and if something comes up, we're going to have to have a meeting.
We'll give it a try.
Okay, thank you.
All right, town administrators' report?
Thank you, I just wanted to update the board, but also the public, about where we stand with this concept of a land swap with DCR. As you, as the board knows, it was a goal for FY seventeen to work with the cemetery board to find available land for a site for cemetery expansion. But when we put out the request for proposals from West Boylston landowners, the two proposals we received, just for excessive pricing, considered not to be feasible. It was suggested by Senator Tranca that we try again. And she helped us to set up a meeting with representatives of DCR to discuss the possibility of acquiring land from DCR for the new cemetery. We did meet, and at that meeting, several possible sites were identified as being lots that DCR would consider giving to the town, either through a land swap that would create equal value between parcels being swapped or through sale of the property. The one question that exists, though, is whether or not the state legislature, the language of the state law, Article ninety-seven, which dictates how state land can be transferred to other owners, we're not sure if an outright purchase of that land is possible. We're looking at that as we speak. The concern that we have is that the town-owned parcels that we identified as being possible options for a land swap are not parcels of the, of land that DCR is anxious to acquire. So the concept of a land swap looks like it's not going to work. So if anything were to happen with DCR, it would be through an outright purchase of the land. So at this point, we're in a holding pattern until we determine whether or not purchase of the land is possible under that Article ninety-seven.
Just to clarify, you're saying they offered properties that, we liked some properties that they offered to truck swap with us.
Yes, they-
But the only thing they want to swap with us is the rail trail.
They, they are looking for the rail trail. They were, they said they'd be willing to look at other parcels. At that meeting, I promised to go through and exercise, identify other vacant parcels of town-owned land that might be of interest to DCR, and they are not interested in that parcel.
They made it clear that they-
I was under the impression that we offered them every single piece of land that we had.
Including cat house.
The exception of the rail trail, the answer would be no. So-
That's absolutely true.
So it's not going to happen.
So I, if the outright purchase, I guess we can follow up on that, but I agree that I don't think-
I think we have to follow through to see what might come of that and see whether it's feasible. Because it's either that or we go back to looking at town-owned parcels of land to see if they could be modified to be more feasible for cemetery use. I mean, the parcels that we, you know, we looked at before were determined not to be appropriate for cemetery land because of the topography, because of the vegetation, et cetera, ledge, whatever. But it might be that if we're not able to make this DCR deal work, then we might need to look back to our own town-owned land again to see what might be feasible.
Well, I mean, I think it's safe to say we don't have a piece of land owned by the town. So that's, what, what would be the land?
We have, we have the Tivnan Drive parcel. Would be a difficult piece of property to develop for cemetery purposes. It could be used for above, above-ground burials.
Right, I mean, that, I'll pick that decision.
But it would require a lot of tree growing, it would be a huge expense. So we either would be looking at town-owned property, a huge expense, or expense of acquiring a piece of land in town. Jim? Have we talked to the cemetery commissioners to see if they have any other ideas? They have been involved in this conversation- But they haven't, after that conversation, Chris, like, were you with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's-
They're, they're at the same point.
Okay, just make-
The prices on the, when we went out looking for land, the prices were a bit high.
Okay.
I bet.
But could we, maybe possibly, I don't know, talk to some of these folks that had, that had land? And maybe if we could meet with them, with the cemetery commissioner, and see if there's something that can be worked out. I don't know exactly what it is, but-
One of the proposers did stop in the office last week and said that if the town wanted to go back to look at another RFP with perhaps different parameters, that he would be interested in submitting another proposal, probably with a more amenable price tag associated with it.
So could, without, could, John and I, I believe we're on the subcommittee or whatever, to meet with them, could, could we meet with them, with the cemetery commissioner, or two of the cemetery commissioners, and kind of discuss that, and then possibly is that-
Absolutely, that can be, that can be happening concurrently while we're waiting for any ruling from the state on the sale of DCR land.
That's, that's what I would ask, because we need to, we're told we need to move forward on this. So I think if we, I think they're saying five years, maybe?
Right. Thank you. Wanted to get the board to be thinking about a date for the annual retreat. Every year, we need to develop goals for both the board and for the town administrator. Last year, we met on July twenty-third. In my report, I offer some dates for possible Saturday meetings. The feedback I've received so far is that the only date that would be possible for Self-And-Prowling would be Saturday, July twenty-ninth. So I need feedback from the board whether or not that is a possible date. If not, then I need to go back to the drawing board to look for additional dates.
Not good. No, I'm just kidding. It's fine with me, except for July twenty-fourth for me.
Ron, do you have anything?
I'll go with it. Yeah, I'll, that's fine. So it looks like it might work for July twenty-ninth?
Yeah, let's, it might work, is that what you want to delta?
I, I, as definite as possible at this point, because then I'll be reaching out to different venues.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that would be my next thing, let's get a place, we can actually bring a piece of food.
Yeah.
We have a great lunch and we're already able to bring anything.
The three, the three locations that I've listed in my report, Holy Cross Contemplative Center, Holy Cross Campus in Worcester, and Holden Police Station Community Room have been offered. I have confirmed with the government liaison at Holy Cross that he was disappointed that we were told that we weren't able to bring food in last time, that he would make sure that we can have food if we indeed go back to the Holy Cross Campus in Worcester. So those are the three locations that would be close by and would provide us the space we need.
I don't think we'd meet at Contemplative Center, wouldn't that be a lot easier for everybody?
Yeah.
If it's available.
If it's available, yeah.
That would be first choice, I assume.
They're only using it a few times, a yes on the show, it's possible.
Okay, good, we'll start moving ahead to see where we can find a location, thank you. I wanted to give an update on where we stand with the regional dispatch. We've been regionalized now with the Wachusett Regional Emergency Communications Center with Holden, basically since middle of April. And it's, we had a few problems, minor complications in the beginning. It's now going, moving ahead very, very well. The phone systems are, we finally have those kinks worked out of that system. The access with the automatic door for a public safety building is now working the way it was intended to be. So the only thing we really have remaining in the equipment aspect of the regionalization is the new emergency communications radio tower, which is to be built over off of Beaman Street on Water Department land. And that has passed the permitting phase. I believe the, I believe the building permits aren't even issued. They hope to have that tower completed and have all the connections ready by the middle of August. And that's an important piece because that will make sure that the, the integrity of communications with the police station are much improved. Right now, we're still having problems with the police station hearing some of the communications in the northern part of the town between cruisers that may be away from the station and then hearing back at the station. So by having this new radio tower up and running, from what the signal tests were done, it's going to show that it's going to be a very much clearer signal, which will greatly improve the ability for safe communications for the police department. We haven't had the same issues with the fire department for whatever reason, but everyone's really anxious to make sure that that new tower is up and running. So at this point, everything is going extremely well. I did receive confirmation today at the meeting from the Holden Police Chief that they did put in a second round of grant requests under the E-N-U-one grant system and were approved for about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of additional grants to assist all member towns in ongoing operations of the center for this next fiscal year, which is great because that will reduce the cost to the town of West Forest.
Great.
Don't hang on that. I know when it first came online, they were still answering the phone, the Holden Police, if you called. You know if that's been rectified?
Yes, it has, they're supposed to be answering that it's the Wachusett Regional-
I know what it's supposed to say, but have they started?
Yes, they, I have been told that they are, and I have not heard any complaints.
Just, I, just from talking to residents, I know in the beginning, they were still saying Holden Police.
Yes, they were, yeah. And I think that's a good point, and that one of the things that we're going to be working on this fall is to start developing protocols so that the response for any town is the same, whether it's, you know, Holden, West Boylston, or Princeton, that the response by dispatch for any call that comes through will be the same for all the towns. So that's going to take, you know, little figuring out, a little bit of compromise here and there, but consistency is really important when you're working to regionalize center.
I would, just to clarify, we, we've had, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've had issues with our radios before. This, this issue with our radios are not just because-
That's correct, that we have had issues with our radio system and it's been to the point where it was kind of really problematic, which is why we were looking so seriously at regionalized dispatch. Because if we were to purchase new equipment at our own expense, we'd be looking at about a million dollars. So, you know, that was why the regionalized dispatch was given such serious consideration and then chosen as the most viable option. And so by having this new radio tower onboard, that will clear up any remaining issues we have in that communication.
With or without the dispatch center, this was going to be, we needed to go to the high ban, we were told by the chief in the past, the antenna.
Right, so the antenna has to go to region.
And I did have an occasion to call and, I don't remember how they answered, but I'll say that they were very helpful. And it wasn't like I was calling California. They, they answered questions, I told them where, where the issue was. They, you know, quickly knew what it was talking about, they dispatched a castle. My experience was good, but I, you're right, I don't remember. I don't, but it might have been, it might have been just the dispatch is so used to saying Holden Police, but I don't remember how they answered, but everything, they were very good and the issue we had, they were, they were there quickly. I mean, that's probably as quickly as if I called locally. I would just ask that maybe at a future meeting under our, if we could just put the phone numbers out again? Kind of the, the emergency number, the nine-one-one, the, the office numbers. I know the nine-one-one, just so. I think I, yeah, it was, I think I might have hit nine-one-one, it went directly to-
Good. Under the hazard mitigation planning, we're working with CMRPC under a state and federally funded grant program to do hazard mitigation planning. So we have staff from police, fire, DPW, the light plant, the water district, and DCR working with the CMRPC to identify any potential weather or rainy hazards and to address appropriate emergency response protocols to address those events when they occur. We just launched a public survey, we're seeking feedback from the public on different issues and questions related to this. So the survey is found on the main page of our website, so I have to ask people to go to the website and just take a few moments to complete that survey that will greatly help us in our planning efforts. And just to let you know, the town was obligated to pay approximately three thousand dollars of in-kind services as part of this grant program. And to date, we've already contributed approximately two thousand two hundred dollars in staff time toward that, and we expect another fifteen to twenty man-hours to be expended over the next few weeks, so we'll have no problem meeting our contributions under that program. We should be presenting a draft plan for the board's review by early fall, I would guess we'd be ready for that. And then some miscellaneous updates, we did receive notice from Worcester Housing Court that under the Karema trucking case, the judge, the judge did rule in favor of the town in the zoning enforcement of the unlawful parking of the commercial vehicles. So the owner of those, the vehicle has thirty days to come in compliance, and after that, enforcement would be through the court. And we've been doing a lot of procurement activity in our offices over the past month. We have requests for qualifications for the architect out for the new senior center, and we have a request for proposals for housing consultant services for the Board of Housing Trust. So today, for the architect, we have approximately thirty firms that have requested trophies of the RFQ document. So that's tremendous response. And it was funny because obviously they knew that we were having a dead exclusion vote yesterday because I've received a whole slew of requests for the packet this morning from different architectural firms. So they know now we're serious and that the voters have approved the funding. And the deadline for submission of the architect and actually the housing consultant is June nineteenth. So I'll be presenting those architect proposals to the committee again next meeting after that. And that's it for my report.
What about the business people and Kate, things, how hard it felt doing business?
Oh, I'm sorry. One of the things that I wanted to have the board give consideration to in goal-setting at the retreat that we're, it looks like we'll be holding on the twenty-ninth, is this concept, we've heard from several different business owners that the permitting process in town was, was difficult to go through. So I think, I'd like to have the board give serious consideration to having this be something that we look at this year in terms of exactly what are the types of issues that they've had, what might we be able to do to make the whole process more user-friendly for businesses? I mean, we're, we're looking to keep our, our tax base diversified and to keep, you know, that commercial tax base as, as high as it can be. So I'm suggesting that that might be an important thing that the board may want to look at.
Have we been receiving specific complaints about specific departments or just the whole process is too burdensome?
In a, in a few instances, it's been specific, and in others, it's just a general frustration expressed. So I think that's why we need to do it, but we're researching in terms of finding out exactly where the problem areas might be.
That's, that won't be unusual, we have talked about that at past retreats and we've talked about, but, I mean, we're talking about these few. There are, we want the residents to know, there's many businesses that have gone through the issue and have thanked us, you know, so there has been some complaints, but there has been many that have had positive responses.
Absolutely.
The Economic Development Committee has talked to a few of them. So just to let people know that, you know, a few had issues, but yeah, I think we can definitely streamline it and work on it for the future.
Again, you know, that involves changing the buylaws.
Yeah, I would think so.
Or it may be that just providing a, a better worded user guide to the permitting process within a noun would be a helpful start.
We've, we have, we've had-
Main discussions about that.
And the building committee, the building department supposedly has something in place, so, you know.
All right, first update, approval of invoices. Cale and Bennick Associates invoiced number W five-five-three-one, five thousand four hundred dollars.
Solo?
Same.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Cancan-Balak Association invoiced number twelve, four thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Jamon? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? General update, the, first of all, update for the senior center, we, they passed the, at the election, as everybody knows. So we have an OPM, we have the three finalists for the OPM, they're going to be in here next Wednesday, seven o'clock. So if anybody wants to come and attend and hear what the, an OPM does and how they affect the project, we're more than welcome to have them there. As far as the police station, with all the rain, the exterior work has slowed down a little bit, but the interior work, they, they have started she-rocking. Did a lot of she-rock in the last couple of days, so that's coming along well. The outside siding's continuing. We're on budget, we're on time, we're on spec, and we're going to, I believe we're going to try to order furniture in the beginning, end of June, so. Still looking late August, sometime September. I mean, we're not rushing them, we want to do it correctly. Still looking late August, sometime September, I mean, we're not rushing him, we want to do it correctly, but it's, it's coming along very well. Thank you. All right, appointments and resignations. Concurrent on the appointment of, uh, Dwayne Henry, eighty-three Anderbrook Drive, in the Solid Waste Advisory Board effective June eighth, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Concurrent on appointment of Bentley Perry Giger, uh, ADA, coordinated effective June first, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire February twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Concurrent on appointment of Patrick Novia, to the Council on Aging, effective June eighth, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
April.
April, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, what did I say?
June. So moved.
Again.
All in favor?
Hi.
Concurrent on appointment of Patrick Novia to the Facilities Implementation and Strategic Planning Committee as a designated of the Council on Aging, effective June eighth, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
On that, um, congratulations Patrick Novia on getting elected, it's great to see that people getting involved with that, with that elective, uh, Wednesday, and now we're doing two committees that they'll be...
That'll be great, yeah. Uh, concurrents on the form...
We really voted, I said that, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any discussion?
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, concurrents on the form of town administrators, reappointment at the month of June, would you like to read them?
Sure, so we have Veterans Agent Douglas Horka for one year, Peg Equipment Coordinator Richard Semirano for one year, Townwide Planning Committee, Joanne Dunn, Richard Semirano, and Tony Sanders for three years, Volunteer Grant Coordinator Theo Jordan and Patricia Page for one year, Open Space Implementation Committee Barbara Wyatt, Michael Carr, and Brenda Bowman for one year, Community Preservation Committee Patricia Hopden and Patrick Crowley, Christopher Ruccio for three years.
I do, uh...
First of all, any motion?
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Now the discussion, yeah.
Yes. So we, you know, everyone heard, uh, during the open session, there are a lot of issues with the Peg Equipment, as well as Peg Coordinator. So, I think, you know, it's wise to do maybe a three-month extension, to see whether the, when we reorganize that Peg Board, as well as when we get the Peg Access Coordinator, and then, you know, we'll see how this goes, if it is okay with you.
Yeah, I, I, I know we talked about it, I, I, I have, personally, I have no issue with letting the Peg Board person get onboard and then maybe looking at this again for the one year. I know it's your appointment, but so the, the Peg Board person has, the Peg Board has nothing to do with this? No set?
This is my appointment.
So, since they have no set.
My concern, though, is that, um, you know, some of the, um, items that John Schlecky referred to earlier, I think are due to a lack of the fact that there has not been a clear and organized role or set of responsibilities for that Peg Equi, for the Equipment Coordinator. And one of the things that I have done, as you see in our June twenty-first meeting, is I put together a very clear job description for the Equipment Coordinator, so that moving ahead, no matter who's in that position, that individual knows exactly what they're obligated to do, when they're obligated to do it, and the Peg Coordinator would be basically his supervisor, along with myself, would have something by which to measure the effectiveness of the individual within that position. So, um, you know, at this point, I don't feel the need to, um, limit, um, the appointment to Mr. Semirano in this. What I see is that we would be giving any individual who we assign to these, you know, an appropriate time period, one year in this instance for appointment, to make sure that we are providing them the proper guidance on how we expect them to do their jobs.
Yeah, I agree with you, but at the same time, you know, over the last year, so we are still waiting for the video, the town video. So the one video he showed us was, even elementary school kid can do it. And again, this room, we have a noise issue, and also, you know, the back curtain. So some of the, and one other issue I will talk, the planning board issues. So we cannot record this meeting, as well as planning board meetings, at the same time. This is a Equipment Coordinator's responsibility.
I disagree. So what, what you've been talking about are, are items that are outside of the scope of the basic Equipment Coordinator responsibilities. The Equipment Coordinator is responsible for maintaining the equipment that we have, making sure it's properly maintained, that it's being repaired in a timely manner, that, um, that if there's any new purchases that need to be made, that they're making recommendations toward the appropriate pieces of equipment that would work to make the system as a whole. That's what the role of the Equipment Coordinator is. The Equipment Coordinator would work in conjunction with the Peg Coordinator and by recommendations of the Peg Board in these other projects that you're referring to, Raj. It's not the Equipment Coordinator's responsibility to, to, um, look to see if there are sound issues within a, a, a building or a room. It's not the Equipment Coordinator's responsibility alone to make, and make any changes uh, within the ability to concurrently record both meeting rooms. Those are things that we need to look at as a whole. So I, I disagree that you're saying that that is a, um, is a, a lack of effectiveness by the current Equipment Coordinator.
But last one year, he was the Peg Coordinator, as well as Equipment Coordinator. So, this, the, you know, if you say this all comes under the Equi, uh, Peg Coordinator, so, the, all I'm, all I'm saying is, you know, the performance is very poor. As a Peg Coordinator, the performance is poor, in, in, overall, the performance is...
Which is why he has not been continued as a Peg Coordinator, you know, controlling individuals to fill that role.
My understanding is you're, you've got this whole proposal that you're going to change how it's organized today, which is what we're looking at at our next meeting. When you do that, in my estimation, it's a good six months to a year, if you're bringing new people in to see how things are going to work, and get the people that have been doing jobs to focus on what their new job descriptions will be.
Yes.
And you're saying that you feel this appointment is good for the, for the one year in order to get all of that together under one roof to make it work the right way?
Yes.
And I would support that.
Well, I, 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 I agree with most of that, but I don't think we can go six months or a year to see if this works, because we've gone two years to get some of this stuff to work. We spent a lot of money on new equipment for that room, and as Raj said, we still can't record two rooms at once.
But that's not...
It's sixteen, it's not the Equipment Coordinator, but it is the Peg and Equipment Coordinator, and that was that person for the past couple of years.
Right.
And it's been renewed for three months, three months, three months.
Which is why he's no longer a Peg Coordinator. We're looking only now as assignment as the Equipment Coordinator, which is a much lesser role.
I just think doing this before we have the other, the twenty-first information all online is, is too soon. I just think, once we talk about this other stuff, things may, we may have different opinions on this, but that's, it's your problem, so I, I guess we can all concur with it, or go no on it, that's fine.
Could, could we concur, but only for a ninety-day preliminary term? Is that, I mean, I, this is, it falls onto you, and we, we are either concur or not concur. So, do we have an option to say concur, but only for ninety days? Is that...
If you're not going to support my recommendation and my appointment, then I have no choice but to say go for ninety days, or go for six months, or whatever. I don't think that's necessary, but if that's what the board wishes to do, we'll do it.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, so we had a motion and a second.
I'm gonna...
I withdraw my motion.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna, we're on everything but the Semirano.
Okay, so we want to make the motion.
I'll move to concur with, at this point, with all of the, um, the, uh, appointments, with the exception of the Peg Coordinator.
Second.
Peg Equipment Coordinator.
All right, is any discussion on that? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so, we'll discuss him at the next meeting.
Well...
Oh, okay.
You have your stuff.
Okay.
I mean, I'd say, this is the twenty-first, so, I mean, ninety days, and then we can discuss it? I mean, that, that'd be my motion.
So, point him for ninety days from June...
And then, then we'll have that, I mean, I guess we can change it on the twenty, the next meeting? If the board agrees. Is that possible? Nancy wants to...
His appointment is on July thirty.
There you go.
And so we could put it off. We could wait...
So July thirtieth, and make it, make it before, so it'll be twenty, the next week, we could, next meeting, we could...
Next meeting.
Okay, so we'll...
That's time we made it.
We'll put it off to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, where were we? Considering improvement of following selection, reappointment for the month of June, Finance Committee, Paul Martin, Emmy Pete Murphy, three years, excuse me. Affordable Housing Trust, Pat Halpin, Robert Burrell, Anne Marie Kramer, and Mark Creven, three years.
So moved.
Second.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I should recuse myself.
Okay.
Of the, um, Finance Committee, please.
Nice, we want to do this separate.
You could, Bob Pete, just not, not Paul.
Well, it's, yeah, but it's together the way it is, so I, I can't.
Well, you just, excuse me, recuce yourself, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Hi.
You're gonna, uh...
Doesn't matter, it's best anyway.
Yeah. But I don't feel right.
Okay. Uh, concurrents on the appointments of the following police officers, work detail at the, uh, rate of forty-three dollars per hour. Need, I'll let you read them.
And there's a number. Uh, so these are from the town of Auburn, we have Ken Charlton, Dan Dyson, Eric Dyson, Adam Gusterson, Stephanie Howard, Jay Johnson, and Todd Pichniki, Christopher Raymond, Justin Starkis, Greg Wadman. From the town of Boylston, we have John Enz, Enz, excuse me, Enanziata. We have Robert Barbato, James Conway, Russell Parker, Jared Boucher, Mark Shepherd, Robert Thomas, Cody Tomassian. And then from the town of Clinton, we have Robert Champagne, Christopher Cornelius, Brian Coyne, Joseph Downing, Michael Fazio, Michael Fazio Senior, John Gogan, James Hisman, Edward Jeffrey, William Comateras, Joseph Lefabre, Michael Martine, excuse me, Miguel Martinez, James McNavara, Jeffrey Nataro, Brendan O'Malley, Brian O'Malley, Jeffrey O'Toole, Carl Schmidt, Paul Sylvester, Michael Welch, Richard Welch, Kevin West, Christopher Willoughby, and then from West Boylston, we have Mark Morrissey.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
And, uh, Richard McCarthy has resigned from the Personnel Board, effective June first, two thousand seventeen. Uh, meeting invitation announcements, uh, fifth meeting is next Wednesday, the, uh, fourth, yeah, fourteenth, at seven, the fifth.
Twenty-fourth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth at seven o'clock. Actually, it's open to the public, so if anybody wants to come, more than welcome. Um, I don't have any other announcements. Uh, future agenda items, uh, slot to report?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
I just have a quick announcement, you had asked earlier for the accountant to provide the balance in the municipal building fund, and she did check, and it's thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Build a lot of that.
One thing, uh, frankly, they had the states in, uh, June, the government row, Lynn Mitchell came in second in all, the whole state of Massachusetts.
That's good, that's great.
Congratulations.
All right, uh, future agenda items.
Um, can we just get an update? I know, um, we voted on the extra money for the roads, and just an estimate of where we're seeing with all of those.
In terms of what projects will begin?
Yeah. I'd like to get the word out as soon as possible, even if it's an estimate to the town's people, because there's going to be a lot going on. Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome. I just have a couple of things, we've talked about this a couple of times, and I, I think we might have put it on a future agenda, putting a policy in place for the town's webpage and all of the Facebook pages that all the different committees use. I don't know if you have that on a future agenda already, but...
But yeah, we haven't scheduled for it yet.
Okay, so we can look at that. And the other thing I'd like to look into before we get to the end of the year, in regards to licenses, to make part of the requirement for us to get, to get the okay from the Water Department and the Light Department. I know in the past, the Light Department has asked if we could do that in regards to licenses, but I would ask that we possibly discuss that at future meeting. If we need to, or, you know, that's what I would ask. Um, and then the other issue, did we get the money from Holy Cross in regards to the...
Yes.
We did, so they, the library, has they, have they started opening? On that, was, is it gonna start maybe, maybe since July first, or?
No, it's, um, I believe it's already started, I think it was, this is past weekend, I believe it was the first weekend, this, the two hours began.
So was it, was the payment of sixty thousand dollars, or was it...
It was a payment of twelve thousand dollars.
So that was, when to when?
Um, it, that will cover the additional hours throughout the year.
So January first, uh, how's it, does it run every...
Fiscal year?
At this...
Holy Cross has agreed that they'll be providing payments annually on or about June first each year.
So we've got that.
So we have enough for those five years of the additional hours.
Okay.
I think, you know, the board should vote, the board should thank the, the public for who, who came out to vote for the Senior Center.
Absolutely.
It was a much-needed one, and, uh, you know.
And, and the people at Health Science yesterday, for, and, uh, Health Science, everything, yes, it was, uh, like Chris said before, part of the worst day we've ever had in an election.
Not like mine, you know.
Anybody that went out there, uh, we appreciate it. All right, thank you so much, motion?
Motion again?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.